Very well.
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 I wasn't in that.
And that's what she married.
I don't know.
Yeah.
That's one seven days.
Sure.
Oh, my God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
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 Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting.
We'll call the meeting to order, and the first order of our business tonight is our invocation and our pledge of allegiance.
Yes, I will.
And tonight we have Pastor Pruitt from the Cowboy Church. Pastor, welcome.
Thank you.
If you all would stand for the invocation and the pledge.
Let's pray together. Father in heaven, thank you so much for the day that you've given to us. Father, I thank you for the many blessings that you've showered upon us. Father, I thank you for the last 21 years that I've had the privilege and joy of living and working in this city. Father, tonight I come to you and pray for our mayor, for the city council, Father, for the business that's at hand this evening. Father, your word tells us that it is ultimately you that puts us in positions of leadership and authority. I thank you for these men and women. I thank you for their lives, for their service. Father, I continue to pray for them, that you would give them wisdom and understanding in their decision-making. Father, as our city continues to grow, I pray that you would watch over us, protect us. Father, in a special way tonight, we continue to remember the Stevens family, so many families that are touched by this tragedy. Father, I pray for the help and the healing that only you can bring. Father, tonight I thank you for our first responders, for our police department, our fire department. Father, I too pray that you would watch over and protect them. Father, enable them to be at their very best as they serve the citizens of this community. Father, again, we thank you for this day and for this evening. Pray that everything that's said and done in this place this evening would bring you honor and glory, and I humbly ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Matt. Well, let the roll call vote show that everyone is here except Mr. Lavender, and he does have an excuse, so I would appreciate someone giving him a pass.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second to excuse Mr. Lavender. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, please note Mr. Lavender's excuse. Minutes. Item C.
Yep. Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting, November 20th, 2023, and accept for the record the board of adjustment minutes for October 10th, 2023, as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Claims against the city?
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims stated November 15th through the 28th, 2023, as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Meeting agenda, is there any changes to the meeting agenda, Mr. Rains?
We have no changes, Mr. Mayor.
Council members, anyone?
None.
All right, seeing no changes, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved as presented. Item F is a special presentation, which we have one tonight. Have some, three new officers tonight. Richard Vassell, Jacob Bonzel, and James Gomez. Gentlemen, congratulations. Wait, wait, not yet, because you're not sworn in yet.
Ayes.
Aye, I'm James Pruitt.
Aye, Jacob Bonzel.
I'm Jacob Bonzel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the laws of the state of Arizona.
And the laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear to faith.
That I will bear to faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend thee against all enemies.
Defend thee against all enemies.
Warring and domestic.
Warring and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
Faithfully.
And in person.
In person.
This charge to be.
This charge to be.
A police officer.
A police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So now be that.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's congratulate these men. Congratulations.
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 Thank you. Congratulations.
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 Is he there?
Yep.
Congratulations again, gentlemen.
After work?
Yeah, now get back to work. All right, our next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion, one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be pulled from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anyone on council who would like to pull anything off the agenda? Or consent agenda, sorry. Anyone from the public? All right, seeing none, then I will entertain a motion.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next item is item H, which is our public comments. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council. I want to remind you to please, if you approach the podium, please state your name, your address, and keep your comments to three minutes, please. I do have a speaking card from Jean Henderson. Jean, if you'd like to approach the podium, please.
Good evening, I am Jean Henderson, 204 East 9th Street, Casa Grande, Arizona, 85122. My vote for the best at the electric light parade is for the ground staff for the exquisite lighting around the trees at Perrot Park, the Christmas tree lights and the crystal white Stargate lights, which I wanted to pass through, if you know what Stargate was. Others were lowriders, bicycles, the nine crystal light reindeer, APS, police and fire department trucks, and others were extra nice. I stood near the end of the parade in the area with mostly Mexican-Americans who loved the whole parade, the songs, lights, lowriders, and all the beautifully lighted entries equalling 100. We also saw about eight to 10 CGPD motorcycle cops who escorted those in the parade. The kids were ecstatic, even though the Good evening, I am Jean Henderson, 204 East 9th Street, Casa Grande, Arizona, 85122. My vote for the best at the electric light parade is for the ground staff for the exquisite lighting around the trees at Port Park, the Christmas tree lights, and the crystal white Stargate lights, which I wanted to pass through, if you know what Stargate was. Others were lowriders, bicycles, the nine crystal light reindeer, APS Police and Fire Department trucks, and others were extra nice. I stood near the end of the parade in the area with mostly Mexican-Americans who loved the whole parade, the songs, lights, lowriders, and all the beautifully lighted entries equalling 100. We also saw about eight to 10 CGPD motorcycle cops who escorted those in the parade. The kids were ecstatic. Even though the weather was nippy, everyone was in a great mood, laughing, singing, dancing, while covered with rose. Also, when leaving the parking areas this time, the exiting was superbly orchestrated, better than I experienced before. Here's hoping for continued out-of-this-world parades. Muchas gracias to the organizers.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Rains. My name is Carl Peterson. I live at 63 Chestnut Lane, Hendersonville, North Carolina. We happen to be in town for a couple days, and I happened to see there was a council meeting this evening. And I happened to look further, and I saw some of the reports of commissions, and I came across the youth commission. And I noted that the youth commission is about to celebrate its 20th anniversary, and that was a little shell-shocking to see that 20 number. But I had to come by this evening and thank you as a council and as a city for keeping the youth of Casa Grande always in the forefront. I want to thank Councilwoman McBride. Without her, the youth commission would have never taken wing and gone forward. Councilman Herman, I know you worked with them for 10 years at least. And I read all of your resumes last night, and you've all been very involved with the youth of Casa Grande over the years. And they're our future, the future of this community, the future of every community. Hopefully, they'll sit in some of your chairs in the years ahead and carry out your important work. Deborah and I have many fond memories of Casa Grande and our years here, and our service in this building and in the school district. And I just want to thank you for what you're doing for Casa Grande. I just hope the people who live in Casa Grande never forget what a privilege it is to be in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Carl, it's good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in tonight. Anyone else? The floor is still open. All right, seeing no one, then I will close the public comments section, and we'll move right to our boards and commissions. Item J on the agenda. This is to consider the reappointment of Brett Benedict, Rick Peters, and Celeste Garza to the Planning and Zoning Commission. These are second terms for all three. We did interview them last week and determined that they were still interested in serving the city, and we appreciate their service and want to thank them publicly for everything they do and the volunteer time that they put in. The Planning and Zoning is a very, very busy and very involved commission. It is probably our busiest commission of all the boards and commissions that we have in the city, and I know it takes some time. Paul, thank you to you and your staff as well for working with this group. I think they're doing a great job, and thank you to your staff as well. So if there are no objections, I'd entertain a motion to approve the three renewed, not renewing candidates.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the reappointment of Brett Benedict, Rick Peters, and Celeste Garza to the Planning and Zoning Commission with the terms to extend through November 7th, 2026.
Second.
All right. I think Brett, you're here, aren't you? Wave your hand. So, and is there any, any of the others here? Just want to recognize Brett. Thank you, Brett, for being here publicly. Appreciate it. And again, thank you to the other two as well. All right, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, they are approved. Congratulations to all of them. All right, next item then is our item K, which is K1, considering the election of the mayor pro tem and the swearing-in. So, Mr. Rains, did you have some comments you wanted to interject here?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, obviously, it's that time of year again for the election of the mayor pro tem and the swearing-in this evening. I do think it's important for our residents to know that our council has essentially elected a process that has typically been one that allows every council member the opportunity to serve a term as the mayor pro tem. And tonight, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, we would ask that you essentially use a similar format as you've used in the past, which is a nomination, and then ultimately, once nominations are closed, then we will take votes.
All right. Ready?
Yeah. Mayor McFarland, I move that we appoint Councilmember Anthony Edwards for mayor pro tem for the next term.
Second.
Does he know what he's getting into?
He's been groomed.
He's been groomed, okay.
The pay raise.
Yeah, we're going to double your salary, Anthony. Actually, that's not true.
That's not true.
I forgot that you do get a salary, sorry.
Salary.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anthony, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And now we have the swearing-in.
Another one.
That's four tonight.
I know.
I know. Very short agenda.
I am Edwards. Do solemnly swear.
And the laws of the state of Arizona.
And the laws of the state of Arizona.
That I bear to faith.
That I bear to faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend against all enemies.
And defend against all enemies.
Born and nested.
Born and nested.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of mayor pro tem.
Of mayor pro tem.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities. So happy to have you down.
Now it's official. Gloria's made it official.
Thank you.
All right.
I think you moved seats.
You know, that concludes actually tonight's business. All we have left is our reports, and Anthony, I'm going to start with you.
First of all, I want to continue prayers for Chris and Vanessa Stevens, so much that they've gone through now, as well as our students. I spent majority of all last week at CGUHS, just being there for the teachers, the students, for anybody that needs any kind of assistance, help, and so much prayer is needed for our students. And so, want to make sure that we do that also. I want to say that we have a lot of great teachers. Our superintendent, who is the councilman, Lavender, is doing a wonderful job, and especially even with this situation, and having to work with the police department, as well as all the other different things that goes along with such sadness. But I want to thank them for their hard work. And the teachers as well, just don't know, teachers as well as students, what's going on that campus, and so much prayer is needed for them. And that's really all that I want to say in regards to any kind of report, is that we just continue to pray for family, as well as the student body.
Thank you, Anthony. Donna?
A couple, just a couple of quick things. Public Safety Foundation Dinner was this weekend. They did a wonderful job. Hats off to Community Services. Danny, your staff are true to none. The parade was fantastic, especially with no rain this year, but they did an awesome job, and downtown was just booming with activity. So I think in the light of the sadness that we've had in the last week, that I think it did everybody a lot of good to have a little bit of cheer, so it was just really good. And that's it.
Can I say something real quick?
Of course.
This is my first year ever being able to be at the light parade, because I'm normally working, I'm normally out of town, out of state. Unbelievable. I didn't know it was that big. I've been patient to get. This got past the old Odenhaus, because I thought that was big.
Way past that.
And it's way past that, and you know, for 85, I think, folks, I'm like, man, it's mind-blowing, I'm like, why you, I tell my wife, why you didn't tell me? It was beautiful, I actually listened to our mayor, he actually, I was right beside you. And so, but it was a wonderful parade, and enjoying ourselves there. Thank you for it.
Matt?
Thanks, Mayor. I was talking to Jeff Lavender, our councilmember, he's not able to be here tonight, and telling him that, how glad I was that he was superintendent of our school at this important time for our community and for the kids, because no one else could have done it. And he sent me an email, asked me to read this on his behalf, since he couldn't be here. So this is from Jeff Lavender. So I want to thank the Casa Grande Police Department for all their hard work in arresting the children who shot and killed Haley Stevens. They've been working day and night to solve this crime. The residents of our community have stepped up like they always do after a horrible tragedy. Thank you to everyone for your massive support, condolences, and prayers. A special thank you to Anthony Edwards for making himself available to support our staff and students last week. He also did an excellent job speaking to the community on Friday night, at the Friday night for Haley candlelight vigil. So thank you. And I'll say, that was Jeff's official statement, and he and I were talking, and he talked about how he met with some of the news stations from Phoenix, and how they're so quick to come down the I-10 for a tragedy, and why don't they show the good part of our community? And there has been some reporting about the vigil, about stuff on the statewide news, and that's what really makes our community great, is how we handle it. But even I've talked to dispatch, and especially Jody with the dispatch, does such a great caring job of covering something so difficult. So I want to recognize them for that, because they're our real hometown news. And I, you know, also to know that Florence School District came together with some people to do the barbecue. The firefighters local 3752 started a GoFundMe for the Stevens family. The original goal was $40,000, but of course, our community, they're already over $75,000 of that goal. The CGUHS cheer had over 100 current and former cheerleaders to walk in the parade to honor Haley. I personally know her father from high school, Chris Ox Stevens, so thoughts really go out to their family. And then on another part, Nick Elliott, the head detective that's in charge of this, is also an alumni of Casa Grande Indian High School. So it just shows our community, and even through tragedy, how we come together, and that's what's special about living here, is Carl kind of says, you know, it's a great community, you know, bad things happen everywhere, but it's how you handle it. And so, I'm really proud of what we've done. So I want to say that, and on a lighter note, thank you. The youth commission, I got to work with them this weekend on their float. They pulled it in the parade.
We saw you in the parade.
We had a, thank you, we had a great time. And the kids is neat, because they're all going through this stuff too, and we were here, we were done with the float, it was about 2:00. And you know, they were here, and I says, well, if you guys want, you can go, and we'll meet up. They go, well, we just want to hang out. I said, so we hung out, and they went and played in the grass, we watched the, their theme was peanuts, so we watched the peanuts Christmas special on the big screen in here, so they practiced their dance moves and everything. So it was really good time for them, and so it was a great thing to see, and they were laying in the grass, and they asked about, we got to talk about the history of the high school building, which we talked about earlier and everything, so it was neat. And to the Community Services Department, my wife rode with me in the truck, and she said, man, this is a well-oiled machine checking in for this parade and everything, so you guys did a great job. And as said earlier, the park looks great, the laser light show on the City Hall building looks fantastic, so thank you very much. Couple things coming up, we have the menorah lighting here December 10th, next Sunday at 5:00 PM, in front of City Hall.
And everyone's invited.
And everyone's invited, so it'll be a great event. It's the third, the third annual that we're going on now. And then I just wanted to remind everyone too, shop small, shop local for the holidays. I mean, shopping small is one thing, and shopping local is quite another, but even, even if you buy it online, we still get some of that sales tax dollars, so you don't have to drive to Chandler or Gilbert or anywhere, you can still get everything here in Casa Grande, almost everything. So please just remember that in the holidays, because you're actually supporting our community who supports these events, like Buffalo Wild Wings next week is doing some of the scenes, so it's all coming together. But just remember, this is the community that takes care of each other, and how we take care of that is by helping out the merchants here and everything, so that's all I'm, oh, and thanks for the decoration Gloria's department, and I got a lot of compliments on the Christmas tree in the lobby as well. So, thank you. And that's it.
Thank you, Matt. Lisa?
You know, and, I mean, you all have said it so well, but I did want to, you know, Mr. Peterson, you talk about how it's a privilege, you know, to be in a community like this, and we all felt it last week. You know, when tragedy hits a community, you know, it's how you handle it, and people coming together, and so it was just such a blessing, and you know, to see people come together and be there for, you know, the families, our fire department, I, my heart goes out to you, this is your family that was affected, our police department, just the outstanding job, you know, it was tough, because there's a lot of rumors going out, and you know, what was happening, but we knew our police department was working behind the scenes to make sure that they had everything in place to bring a conviction and bring, you know, these people, and bring, you know, justice to Haley. So, you know, I'm just so proud, you know, of our team, our staff, you know, making sure that you're keeping the community calm. You know, the school district, of course, I have family and friends that teach there, you know, friends that have kids there, it's just, it's just huge. I mean, it's just been a very, very tough time for our community, and we've come together. And, you know, of course, you know, you want to celebrate, and the electric light parade was so great, you know, it was a tough time, people were mourning, but I think by, you know, the cheer team coming together, and, you know, having their candlelight walk in memory, you know, and some of the floats even had in memory of Haley, you know, to her family, so, you know, people were, you know, felt that presence and proud to be from that community, and that was a way for us to all come together, and our community service did a fantastic job. It was a great event. I just, it's just so exciting to see all the little kids and, you know, all ages at that parade. So just again, so proud, and that was a perfect time, you know, for all of us to come together and celebrate us as a community. So I just thank everyone that was involved there. You know, we also celebrated the life of a longtime Casa Grande, the old firefighter, you know, Gene Lehman, you know, his service was, you know, beautiful, and, you know, just celebrated the life of a man that has done so much for our community. So that was a great event. So, but yeah, no, I think, you know, we have a lot, lot to look forward to, and, you know, this is a time of celebration, but just keep all those people in your prayers and your hearts that suffered during these times too, especially with loss. That's it.
Thanks, Lisa. Bob?
Mayor, nothing further than what's already been talked about. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I just echo all my fellow council members' sentiments on Haley's death, and I think it hit our committee really hard. And so I think the electric light parade was an opportunity for us to celebrate and kind of pick ourselves back up. So, you know, talk to each other, talk to your kids, hold your kids close, and we'll get through this. Mindy, I wanted to ask, is it too late to vote for the people's choice?
Yeah, I voted today.
Oh.
Yesterday, 6:00 PM.
Oh, thanks.
Don't you read the website?
Well, I did, but I didn't remember the date. All right, never mind. But there is, we do have the light home tour, the home tour, that starts on December 11th. So that's, how many do we, how many entrants do we have?
About 50.
50, so we have 50 homes that have signed up to be part of this exhibition, and you can get the map off of our city's website, and go visit as many as you can, because I know a couple of them, and they are spectacular.
All right.
I know there's like three of, three or four of them in, just in my neighborhood in Coyote Ranch, so my daughter's one of them too, so vote for hers, would you?
Don't give the address.
I won't. And then also, I want to, I want to also recognize, it was my wife's birthday last week, so happy birthday, babe.
Good job.
I usually forget, not her birthday, but I forget to give her credit. Anyway, also a shout out to the parade staff. Danny, great job by your staff, please give them our appreciation, really all the city staff, fire, police, everybody worked together, streets, public works, yeah, everybody worked together, it was really a group effort, and I really want to give a big shout out to everybody. And also to our sponsors, Kramer Media, thank you guys for your support, APS, thank you for your support as well for this parade, because you guys make it happen. And then again, on that home tour, December 11th to 31st, 31st is the last day you can vote, so I do know that date. December 31st. And then I also wanted to give a shout out to one of our new employees, he happens to be here tonight. Rob, you're here, stand up, Robert. Robert is our- Robert is our new management analyst, who's working under Larry Rains, so welcome, and welcome to the city, and thank you for being here. If you all haven't met him, you need to introduce yourself. He's a nice young man. And that's probably enough for me, so, anyway, appreciate it, everybody, and we'll stand adjourned. Nice short meeting.